Good evening, everyone. The August 4th, 2022 City Council Meeting is called to order. I'd ask Josh Powell to provide the invitation, and please remain standing for the pledge to the flag.
Good morning, everybody. Hello, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity to serve our community. We thank you for this mayor and council, and what they represent and what they do for our community. We pray that the decisions that we make up here and the leadership that we provide to our citizens will be in your will and in what you want for our community. Lord, we pray your blessing over our town, and that it asks you, God, to protect us in all that we do. And just as I pray, amen.
Amen. I pray that you should be like the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome, everyone. It's been a little while since we've been back in this chamber, so it's good to be back here and glad to have all of you with us tonight. We are going to start this evening with some special presentations. We'll be recognizing some special people who have served the city of Dublin for a long time, as well as our employee of the second quarter. Mr. Powell, will you start with that, please?
Sure. Let me get Mr. Sammy Daniel to come forward.
Sammy Daniel is the employee of the second quarter for the city of Dublin for the year 2022. Sammy has been a very dedicated employee for the city of Dublin Gas Department for 22 years. He began his employment on June 23rd, the year 2000. Sammy has gotten the reputation as the best groundman in the game. With an operator experience for brand new, you always want Sammy as the groundman. Sammy was moved to a special projects coordinator in the gas department where he was not only in the field, but on project planning, as well as assisting with utility protection. Within this past year, Sammy has respectfully taken the position as subsurface technician. This job is one of the most important positions we have. Not only is it to locate the city utility, he also has to coordinate with all contractors on installations. That is where his knowledge, personality, and huge smile come into play. Sammy is a great coworker, father, husband, grandfather, and an even better friend. So it's a great pleasure to have him associated with the gas department. Your coworkers love you. Congratulations to Sammy Daniel.
All right, congratulations, Mr. Daniel. We're now going to recognize employees who have been with the city of Dublin for at least 20 years. This is for the 20-year service pin. Mr. Powell?
Zachary Whipple of the West Water Department.
Congratulations. This is your 20-year pin. We appreciate your service to our community.
Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Josh Beasley with the police department.
Congratulations. Thank you. On behalf of the city of Dublin, we thank you for your 20 years of service. This is small talk, but we appreciate you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Eddie, or Chris Wright.
From Public Works Street Department.
On behalf of the city of Dublin, here's a small talk, and we appreciate you for your 20-year pin. We thank you for your service. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
I hope to see all of you back here again in 20 years. All right, well, congratulations to all of you guys. Appreciate your years of service. Before we move into the agenda, do we have a motion to amend the agenda?
Make a motion that we replace item C with a fire truck ladder repair bid and remove item D, 3D, 3C and D.
All right. Do we have a second on the motion?
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Jones and a second by Mr. Mascara. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The agenda is amended as set out by Mr. Jones. Now we'll move to item number one, which is approval of the June 16th, 2022 council meeting minutes. Do we have a motion?
I think we have approval.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a second from Mr. Brown. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is approval of bills over $15,000. Mr. Powell?
Do you have the copy of those bills in your packet?
Any questions about any of the bills? Do we have a motion for approval?
Any motion?
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Mascara and a second from Mr. Griggs. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We'll now move to item number three, which is purchases of over $15,000. Mr. Powell?
First item is 3A, is roof repairs for the ground and surface water plants. We received some bids and, or folks, and the staff recommended us to approve in cross-roofing. They were the lowest bids of the thickest roofing at 60 mils of PPO, and the bid is The next item is telecom build-out for our telecommunications, and it would be to upgrade our existing 72-count fiber line with a 144-count line, which goes down 441, and it serves things like the 911 center and all those businesses down 441. We're trying to get prepared to increase the capacity there and make sure we have a reliable fiber optic line going down that way. The bid we asked you to approve is from A&amp;H Services in the amount of $25,000, and that has been budgeted. Item 3C, which was replaced, is the fire ladder truck repair, which is the hydro-motion swivel on our ladder truck has need repaired, replacement. The bid we received was from Fire Line Incorporated and Winder to make that repair for the parts and the labor. It's $23,434. Staff has to approve that. We removed item 3D from the agenda. Item 3E is a proposal on the Oconee Gym for the public's benefit. You may recall that council has approved renovations and money to be spent on the Oconee Gym, and we want to deliver on that. So the first step is getting some plans underway and have evaluated by an architecture firm, and Garbage Construction has sent us a proposal to do that work at $20,577.32, and they'll provide us with the renderings and proposal and cost estimates to achieve the project, which we hope will involve renovating the gym itself, but also looking to expand the gym to possibly include an additional court. And so we are going to look for additional funding to help make this project become a reality, and ask that you approve the proposal from Garbage Construction so we can move forward.
All right. You've heard Mr. Powell's discussion of the purchases over $15,000. Do we have a motion?
I'm a motion.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Mascara and a second from Mr. Smith. Do we have any discussion on any of the items? See if I have any comments or discussion on any of the purchase items. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
The city of Dublin Natural Gas provides the most cost-efficient source of energy available today. So for your home, choose the most natural resource, safe, clean, efficient. All new subdivisions around the Dublin area have natural gas available. Start reducing your energy bills today with Dublin City Natural Gas Department. Natural gas, the smart choice. Call 277-5048 today and let us help you start saving today. First Lawrence Bank invites you to experience banking at its best. Whether you have personal or business needs, we're a full-service bank, big enough to handle all of your banking needs, and small enough to provide you with that personal touch you've gone to expect from a community bank like First Lawrence Bank. Looking forward to your future, that's First Lawrence Bank in Dublin and Dexter, Member FDIC.
We'll now move to item number four, which is discussion and action on a resolution to appoint a city manager. In your packet, you saw the form of the resolution. Do we have, do you need to read the resolution?
It's Resolution 2232. It's a resolution by the mayor and council of the city of Dublin to appoint a city manager pursuant to the city's charter, to accept and approve the terms of an employment agreement with Joshua W. Powell, to set an effective date and for other lawful purposes.
All right, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to appoint Mr. Powell as city manager.
We have a motion from Mr. Mascara and a second from Councilman Griggs. We'll give each council member an opportunity to make any comments before we call a vote on this. We'll start with you, Mr. Mascara, since you made the motion.
I think that we have been lucky to have Mr. Powell. He's done a great job since we got here. He had a bunch of turnover on council. He does his job well, he's proficient. The reports have come back from people's morale. I mean, he's doing a good job. In my mind, you've got an awesome running back by change in the middle of the game.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mascara. Mr. Smith?
My comment is that mayor and council follow the process and standard processes. Don't pick and choose. We follow the process, and we do it consistently across the board, and not just pick and choose.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Griggs?
I feel like Josh has done a great job so far. He's very thorough, he's proactive, he acts like he likes the job. I'm not sure about all that, but I've seen a big change in the attitudes of people working together that work for the city, and I hear a lot of employees comment about how willing they like what he's doing.
Thank you, Mr. Griggs. Councilman Colby?
I just have a few words to describe what I've seen in action over the last eight months. He has proven in everything he has promised or said that he would do, he's come through them, he's been effective, intentional, fair, professional, and he is held in high regard.
Thank you for those comments. Ms. Godfrey?
Okay, so I am in disagreement with it because I believe in following a process. I believe in being fair, and I thought that we were going to open up this job opportunity, and I just, I love him, he's doing an excellent job, but I just want to be fair and open it up to give other people a chance. You never know what you'll get if you never cast a net. So we never cast a net, we're not going to open it up, so that's the only reason I'm in disagreement, because I think we should give other people a chance.
Thank you, Ms. Godfrey. Mr. Jones?
Thank you. I'm gonna say, we wonder why the trust between the public and the officials is distrust because of moves that we're trying to do tonight, today. The recent candidate that ran, they got elected in November, told the public when they ran that this would be a new regime, we're not gonna do things the same way, they're not gonna need to cut over our system. I'm looking at, hey, this works for what we did with the old system. At least they did when they hired that, they did go through the hiring process. I mean, I understand, people may say, yeah, I must say, I don't have anything personally against you, don't. But you never know what you get. We look at kind of administrator, Brian Rock, he's been with it kind of over 20 years, he's not from Dublin. He's doing an excellent job. Worried about the projects getting bid, you get a good city manager in here that got experience, these projects will move forward, and I think we'll take a jet and move on. And I know I was part of, I was fooled, I must say, yeah, I was tricked. I was. My mama always told me, get something in writing and get a copy of it, and I did. Because at first, she said he didn't want the job, hurry up and do it. But we kicked the can down the road too long, we kept asking. We were gonna hire a city manager. I was told we were gonna start living in January. We're gonna apply for, we're gonna have a new city manager by next. So I guess this is a way of coming up on our promise, but public, y'all know what y'all were promised during the campaign election, you know what you was told, you know what any new council and mayor told you. That's all I'm saying.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I've been on council for quite some time. Was on council the last time we hired a city manager, and there were some other things that happened during that process, too, that I want to vote here in the public eye. But Mr. Powell has served the city honorably, both as city attorney and also as interim city manager. He's proven to be transparent, fair, meticulous in his actions. He has employee support, and I think in eight months he's been in that position, his track record has proven. So I'm in favor of appointing him as well. Thank you.
Thank you. This is actually one of the issues that I vote on, which is unusual because, as y'all know, in most situations, I'm only here in case of a tiebreaker or just to keep the meetings moving along, but I do vote on this issue. And this has been, it's been a journey for me as I've learned more about the city and the workings of the city. When I first came in as mayor, I talked with council about the city manager position, and at that time, I said that I would like to do a nationwide search to find the best city manager possible for the city of Dublin. And I told everybody that, and I believe that. And at that time, I was indifferent as to who might be the interim city manager, thinking that that position would not be their home. So that's, I fully own that that's what I said. And, you know, what happens is it takes a lot to recognize when you need to change your ways on something. And what happened was, as we got into this, I saw Josh's performance, and it was, I didn't know him before I became mayor, so I wasn't, I didn't know whenever I started how he was going to perform. But you look at what he's done over the last seven months, and it's been pretty amazing. I think if you look at the reviews that he's gotten, you know, we went through a process of doing reviews of the people who have been appointed by city council to different positions. And in those reviews, Josh got excellent marks, high marks. He was rated over four on a four-to-five scale by this council here, and I think everybody in this council agrees he's doing a great job. He also got very high ratings from his peers, the people who are at the same sort of level that he is, who don't report to him, people who don't have any reason to want to say positive things about him. He received over a four-and-a-half rating from his peers. And then we also did a survey of department heads to see what the department heads thought about his performance, and he was rated over four on a one-to-five scale. In other words, everybody that has been asked, how is he, how is he doing, has said he's doing a fantastic job. And if you look at what he's done, he responds quickly to all council members. I think everybody on the council agreed he's very responsive, he's not political, he doesn't try to set the agenda, he asks council what the agenda is. He recognizes that the limitation of his role is to do what the agenda that council sets, and he follows our direction, and he's fair. I don't think anybody here can say that he's ever been fair or secretive. I think that everybody understands how ethical and professional and even-handed that he's been. And I think that even people who might vote no tonight will agree with all of those things. I know that he's got positive relationships with everybody up here, and many, many people in the public who've had an opportunity to deal with him. Now, it's especially difficult for me to say we shouldn't do this search process because I'm the one who said we should do a search process, so why am I pulling back on what I said initially? And Robert, Mr. Jefferson, do you mind pulling up the project list for us? I'd like for the public to see what we've been working on for the last six months. We're at a unique time in the history of our city. The federal government has given us two years to allocate and spend over $6 million. Our time is short, and we have put together through a lot of hard work and extra hours, mainly through Blake and Josh and this council, a list, a very impressive list of projects that we want to accomplish for this community. Not just renovations to the Oconee Gym, which we start tonight. Can you scroll up just a little bit? Let's start at the top so the public can see all the things that we've got going on. The construction of a new city maintenance center, renovations of City Hall, renovating the Oconee Gym, renovating the Emery Thomas Auditorium, creating a north side fire station, renovating the south side fire station, renovating the Shamrock Fire Station. Let's keep going. Saving Riverview Golf Course from closure, and I can't tell you how many hours Josh has spent out of Riverview trying to get a handle on that situation. Reinvigorating the police department, and you can already see that the police department morale has increased significantly over the last six months. Improvements to the water plants, which we start tonight with the roofs. And we haven't started with the parks budget. We're trying to do a full renovation of Stubbs Park to expand that for the people who live in town. We're also trying to create the Gary Johnson Park, the Cursey Lane Park, do half a million dollars of renovations to Springville Park, create a Gateway Park for the south side, and we're applying for tens of millions of dollars of grants for the Riverview Park, the Riverview Wall Project. As far as community projects, we're trying to establish two community centers. The list goes on. We have some very ambitious transportation projects that will improve the lives of so many of the people who don't just live here, but travel through here. We've got crosswalks through downtown, we received a large grant to work on Jackson Street between the federal courthouse and East Dublin, we received a $3.3 million grant to do Madison Street, we have our resurfacing list. In other words, if you look at all that this council is trying to do, it could be transformative for this community, and I am not willing to hit the pause button. If we, if we go through a search process, it's going to cost $35,000, it's three months minimum to get candidates, and then if we bring somebody in new, how long is it going to take them before they can build relationships with our 250 employees and our dozen departments? Just to understand the city is going to take over a year. We can't hit the pause button. Our community needs us now. For us to deliver on these projects in a timely manner, which we have to do under federal law, we've got to keep this train moving. Now, if Josh's performance had been poor, then I'd say we gotta do it. We gotta step back and do that. But I have been amazed, I've been surprised, and I've been impressed. I think that this is what's for the best for our community, and I hope that after today's vote, we can all rally around this and get to work on these projects, because our community needs us, and we're here to deliver. We'll now take a roll call vote, please.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Charles?
No.
Councilwoman Godfrey?
No.
Councilwoman Colby?
Yes.
Councilman Griggs?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
No.
Councilman Mascara?
Yes.
Thank you for that. Congratulations, Mr. Powell. We look forward to working for you moving forward. I do want to make a comment that council has discussed this for well over an hour and a half in executive session, had many conversations about it. One thing I think we all agree on is that we may have had a difference of opinion and process, but all of us know that we can work well with Josh, and we're looking forward to unifying and working together for the good of the community. And it's just true, you're going to have disagreements from time to time, but a good team keeps working together. So that's what, that's what's up next for this council.
Hi, I'm Tom Domney, Dublinwood Nelson Company. We're a full-service wholesaler specializing in plumbing, irrigation, and industrial products. We are committed to building long-term relationships with our customers by earning your business every day. With a staff that collectively offers more than 50 years of expertise, our team knows your industry. We're able to answer your questions and are ready to help you get the parts and equipment you need. At Dublinwood Nelson, our goal is long-term success of your business. We achieve that goal with a simple commitment, doing things right, one customer at a time. Our showroom is complete with the latest styles and fixtures. Stop by and see us at 507 Airport Road, or give us a call at 478-272-3585. That's Dublinwood Nelson.
Hi, I'm Brandy, and I would like to invite you to experience our newly renovated mammography suite at the Fairview Park Hospital Breast Center. Our breast center has its own dedicated entrance with a relaxing boutique-like waiting area. You can make your appointment online anytime at fairviewparkhospital.com or by calling Most appointments take 30 minutes or less, and we will have your results back to your doctor within 24 hours.
Please move to the next item on the agenda, item number five.
This is discussion and action on a resolution to adopt a policy to provide certain employment incentives for newly hired police officers of the police department. It's Resolution 2232. It's a resolution by the mayor and council of the city of Dublin to adopt a policy to provide certain employment incentives for newly hired police officers of the police department, to provide authority for implementation and modification, to set an effective date and for other lawful purposes. What this policy will do is allow new hires of the police department, depending on their level of training and experience when they're hired, receive a bonus, and it's a way to try to incentivize people to apply to become, either become police officers or existing police officers to come to the city of Dublin Police Department. We've had for years budgeted positions that were vacant, that were never filled, in the police department, and this is one step we're taking. You've probably seen many other communities take this step to try to bring on new law enforcement personnel, and it's tiered based off their level of experience, so, and you can see there on screen, the three different tiers. But we ask council to approve the resolution, which will adopt the policy, and also approve the employment agreements that we'll use with each person who receives these funds. So if a new officer is hired, they will have to sign a service contract and agree to serve based on the level of experience, a certain number of years, up to six years.
If they break their contract, then what?
We'll seek to collect the money back from them, yeah.
Great. You've heard Mr. Powell's explanation, this resolution. Do we have a motion?
Let me.
We have a motion from Councilman Smith, and that's a second from Councilman Brown. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Item number six, discussion and action on a resolution to approve an engagement letter with our auditors. Mr. Powell?
This is Resolution 2234. It's a resolution by the mayor and council of the city of Dublin authorizing execution of an engagement letter with Nicholas Colley and Associates for professional auditing services for the fiscal year 2022 audit, to set an effective date and for other lawful purposes.
All right, we have the resolution that's just been described. Do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Jones and a second from Councilman Griggs. Any discussion on the motion? Any questions for staff? All those in favor, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Item number seven is the first reading of an ordinance to amend the FY22 budget. Mr. Powell?
This is ordinance number 2221, an ordinance by the mayor and council of the city of Dublin to amend the budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022, to provide for an effective date and for other lawful purposes. We will have the second reading of this ordinance at our next council meeting on August 18th. The purpose of the ordinance is to bring us into budgetary compliance and to provide greater transparency for our legislative.
All right, we'll now move to item number eight, which is discussion and action on a resolution for an amendment with the Tyler Technologies Agreement. Mr. Powell?
This is Resolution 2228. It's a resolution by the mayor and council of the city of Dublin to approve and accept an amendment to the agreement with Tyler Technologies Incorporated, reassigning the municipal online fees to the city to authorize and direct the mayor and city clerk to execute the same, set an effective date, and for other lawful purposes.
You want to provide an explanation about that?
If you, if you go online and try to pay your utility bill or your tax bill with your credit card, you've probably seen there's a fee that you're, you know, most people are aware you're charged a fee by the credit card processing company. But for our system, the company that we use, the vendor we use to provide that service also charges an additional fee that you may have seen, and it differs based on if you're paying your utility bill or your taxes. But the city is now going to absorb that fee, and so that will not be a burden on the individual customer from you on that.
All right, thank you for that explanation. I think that the citizens will appreciate that as they're paying their bills. Do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Griggs and a second from Councilman Brown. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to item number nine, discussion and action on a resolution to accept a rural downtown redevelopment grant. Mr. Powell?
This is Resolution 2231. It's a resolution by the mayor and council of the city of Dublin to accept and approve a rural downtown redevelopment grant from the Georgia Department of Community Affairs for the Madison Street redevelopment project, to authorize the mayor to execute and deliver documents for the grant, to set an effective date, and for other lawful purposes. And this is the 3.3, just over $3.3 million grant that was discussed just earlier.
This is, this is to accept the $3.3 million. You want to provide an explanation about the?
If you, if you go online and try to pay your utility bill or your tax bill with your credit card, you've probably seen there's a, there's a fee that you're, you know, most people are aware you're charged a fee by the credit card processing company. But for our system, the company that we use, the vendor we use to provide that service also charges an additional fee that you may have seen, and it differs based on if you're paying your utility bill or your taxes. But the city is, is now going to absorb that fee, and so that will not be a burden on the individual customer from you on that.
All right, thank you for that explanation. I think that the citizens will appreciate that as they're paying their bills. Do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Griggs and a second from Councilman Brown. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to item number nine, discussion and action on a resolution to accept a rural downtown redevelopment grant. Mr. Powell.
This is Resolution 2231. It's a resolution by the mayor and council of the city of Dublin to accept and approve a rural downtown redevelopment grant from the Georgia Department of Community Affairs for the Madison Street redevelopment project to authorize the mayor to execute and deliver documents for the grant, to set an effective date, and for other lawful purposes. And this is the 3.3, just over 3.3 million dollar grant that was discussed just earlier.
This is, uh, this is to accept the 3.3 million dollars from the state of Georgia. Do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Brown and a second from Councilman Colby. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 10, second reading and public hearing on an ordinance to annex 1.25 acres. Mr. Powell.
This is ordinance 2219, annexing and incorporating into the municipality of the city of Dublin, Georgia, 1.25 acres, more or less of land located at parcel D12C003 as B2 highway-oriented business zone. The proposed use is for a restaurant. And this is where the, you might have seen it being constructed already. It's the Pickle Barrel right there at the corner of the bypass, the 441 bypass and 441 south.
Okay, we'll now close the city council meeting and open a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Seeing none, is there anyone here who would like to speak against this ordinance? Hearing none, we'll now close the public hearing, reopen the council meeting, and turn this item over to council for action. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
We have a motion from Mr. Mascara, a second from Councilman Griggs.
That's to approve, right?
Motion approved, yes.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the ordinance. Thank you for that. This, is there any discussion on this motion? Any discussion? All right, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Jones?
Yes.
Councilwoman Godfrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Colby?
Yes.
Councilman Griggs?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Mascara?
Yes.
Ordinance passes.
All right.
Maybe he landed here totally by coincidence. But if by chance, he's admiring your fresh coat of Benjamin Moore Soft Sky Blue, well, that's a pretty high compliment. Coming from an expert.
Quality products and installation since 1985. That's Four Seasons.
Glenn Registered Hometown Supply. Come by today and let me show you all the different product lines that we carry. Just about anything that you need, we have it in stock. We do financing, we deliver. Just about anything a customer needs for us to do, we do. Come by and let me show you what sets us apart from all the rest. If you can't do business here, you just can't do business.
Let's move to item number 11, the second reading and public hearing on another annexation ordinance. Mr. Powell.
This is ordinance number 2215, annexing and incorporating into the municipality of the city of Dublin, Georgia, 2.34 acres, more or less of land located at the northeast corner of the intersection of US Highway 441 and Southern Pines Road, contained in parcel D12D008 as B2 highway-oriented business. And the proposed use is for car wash.
Okay, all right, we'll now close the city council meeting and open a public hearing on this ordinance. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Hearing none, is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Anyone here in opposition? Hearing none, we'll now close the public hearing and reopen the city council meeting, turn this item over to council for action. Do we have a motion related to this ordinance?
I'd like to motion to approve.
We have a motion from Councilman Griggs. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Mascara. Any discussion on this proposed annexation? Hearing no discussion, we'll have a roll call vote.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Jones?
Yes.
Councilwoman Godfrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Colby?
Yes.
Councilman Griggs?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Mascara?
Yes.
Ordinance passes.
Okay, we will now move to item number 12 on the agenda, which is the second reading and public hearing on another annexation ordinance. Mr. Powell.
This is ordinance number 2216, annexing and incorporating into the municipality of the city of Dublin, Georgia, 3.899 acres, more or less of land located at parcel 099B136 as R4 multifamily residential zone. The proposed use is for multifamily homes. It's a apartment complex.
All right, well now close the city council meeting and open a public hearing regarding this ordinance. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this annexation? Please come on down and just tell us your name and who you represent or?
Yes, sir. My name's Steve Brooks. I represent IDP Properties and Terry Development Partners. We're out of Batos, Georgia. We are the developer, proposed developer of this proposed community. I know we've got some discussions at pre-council. I just wanted to come up and say we are here to help try and solve the housing shortage we are facing in our country. Right now, homeowners, renters, everyone is experiencing significant cost burden from interest rates to inflation, since I forgot, started getting allowance. This is probably the biggest inflation we've ever seen, right, in our country. And people are struggling to find ways to survive of all walks of life. We would just like your consideration to approve this development, to provide 64 rental apartment units. I understand it with some concerns on design. We are willing to work with a design charrette, or however we want to call that, design team, and come back later if that's what the council's wishes are. We do want to be a good neighbor. We do want to fit in with what your vision of the community and neighborhood town should be. And just would like to ask for your support. Would you like to answer any questions? I know we talked before about it.
All right, do y'all have any questions for Mr. Brooks?
Yeah, so we had on before, we were talking about Mr. Powell, and we made a commitment to the people in our town to make change. And our town, for me, and you know my sentiments in there, if we're going to be a partner, I just want you to be the best partner that you can be. And we absolutely need affordable housing. And I just want us to come back to this when you come back with what we talked about in the last meeting. I want to see your best showing for the people that we represent, because that's what they elected us to do.
Yes.
And as I said in, in pre-council, this is not what we discussed. This is, this is what's good for your company.
No, sir, this is not what is good for our company, to be clear. This is more expensive than what the other product is. This is what you asked for. It's hard to see it on this design, but this is very similar to the product that we had mentioned in another community. And I think we can work through that with, like I said, this design, suppose, you know, getting together again and bringing in some more, and bringing the architects in and meeting with your staff, I mean, city staff, you know, and trying to work through that. So it is our intent to deliver on that.
And what we do there is important, because it'll dictate what we do going forward. And there are people, like you said, but this, we just got to do the right thing. Would you be committed to working with Ms. Bradshaw?
Yes, sir. I just want to clarify, someone mentioned vinyl. There is no vinyl on this building at all. Earlier I heard that mentioned. This is all brick, stone, hardy, just to be clear. It's very hard to see it in some two-dimensional images. I, you know, obviously once you build something, it's a lot easier to show it off.
Any other questions for Mr. Brooks? Well, thank you for coming and providing those comments. We still have another two minutes for comments. If anybody else would like to speak in favor of this ordinance, and then we'll turn it over to anybody opposed. Anybody else want to speak in favor of the ordinance? All right, now is there anybody who would like to speak in opposition to the ordinance? Hearing none, we'll now close the public hearing on this ordinance and turn this item back over to council for action.
We have a motion to approve. We have a motion to table.
We have a motion to table. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion to table from Mr. Jones and a second from Councilman Godfrey. Any discussion? Now would be the time for any discussion. If you had some additional comments?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So when this gentleman comes back to us, is he going to bring the Ashbury design that Chris Smith asked for the very first time that he was here, or not? Will he bring that back this time?
The, the motion to table would give him an opportunity to do that. And if he doesn't, then council will have to decide what to do with the annexation request. And, you know, once it's tabled, it actually takes a motion to untable it, to get it back on. So, any other comments or questions? Okay, so we have a motion to table. We have a second on that motion to table. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. This ordinance is tabled.
My name is Phil Patel. I am one of the part owners here and the general manager here at the Hampton Inn and Suites. First time when I got introduced to Morris Bank, the people were so friendly and helpful. You feel like that you are appreciated there. At Morris Bank, everybody down at the bank is so friendly, and not just to myself, they're just friendly to everybody. They want us to succeed, because our success is their success at the same time. That makes a lot of difference, and they're always there for us.
Looking for a career that's always in demand? How about one that provides you with practical and useful skills? A career that allows you to earn hands-on experience and an education with little to no debt? O'Conne Fall Line Technical College prepares students with the right set of skills to succeed in fast-growing careers in healthcare, manufacturing, business, and technology fields. If you're ready to gain the experience you need to start your career locally, OFTC is where it all begins. O'Conne Fall Line Technical College, careers begin here.
We'll now move to item number 13, which is the first reading of an ordinance to rezonate 2.28 acres of land. Again, this is a first reading, so no action will be taken on this one tonight. Mr. Powell.
This is ordinance number 2220. It's an amendment to the official zoning map for the city of Dublin, Georgia, as previously amended for the purpose of rezoning 2.28 acres, more or less, of properties located at 101 Walt Berry Road and parcel D04A012A, Dublin, Georgia, from R1 single-family residential to key professional, proposed use for office space. This property, just for public benefit, is right behind the Nissan dealerships. It was formerly operated as the McDonald's headquarters, since the house has come off Walt Berry Road back towards the neighborhood.
That was the first reading of the ordinance. There will be a second reading and public hearing at our next meeting. Then we'll move to item number 14, which is discussion and action on a cost-sharing agreement with Lawrence County Board of Education. Mr. Powell.
Back in 2020, discussions began with the city about having utilities constructed to reach the new West Lawrence Middle School. And the city asked the school system, when they paid to have this, these utilities done, the water and sewer lines, that they upgrade the capacity. And, and that's not unusual for us when we have a development that's going to be, you know, far out and potentially reach other properties. We'll oftentimes ask the developer to increase the capacity so that we will be in a position when we accept the water line and sewer lines to serve additional customers. Lawrence County Board of Education has done that for the West Lawrence Middle School site. And so we have this cost-sharing agreement that we ask council to approve, which will compensate them for the difference in the upgrades that we requested the data provided.
All right, you've heard Mr. Powell's explanation of the cost-sharing agreement. Do we have any questions for staff regarding this?
I just want to clarify that this is just the additional amount that it would cost to get that increased capacity. So we're going to benefit off of, the city will benefit from this increased capacity.
Right, they, you know, our engineering department looked with their construction team, their developer, and their engineers to determine what additional capacities we would need to serve future customers out that way. And then you can see a detail there, what they increased for us. That's kind of working out a little bit.
So the middle school, Lawrence County School Board is going to pay us double the water and sewer water.
They will pay the outside of the city limit, right?
Outside of the city, double.
Any other questions for staff? All right, do we have a motion on this resolution to approve the call-sharing agreement?
Make a motion to approve.
Sir.
We have a motion from Councilman Griggs and a second from Councilman Brown. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it. We will note the, I believe there's one no vote. Is that correct? Just one no vote, okay. Item number 15 on the agenda is discussion and action on a resolution to authorize the acquisition of property for the industrial sewer project at YKK. Mr. Powell.
This is Resolution 2230. It's a resolution by the mayor and council to approve the acquisition of certain easements for the industrial park sewer project to authorize the mayor and city manager to execute documents necessary for said acquisitions, to set an effective date and for other lawful purposes. This is a project that's being funded by a G Philone as well as an EDA grant. And it will dramatically increase our capacity on our sewer line that runs behind the YKK property. And we have to, as a part of that, we're needing some additional easements. And so this is what we'll, this is having council approve those acquisitions.
All right, you've heard the discussion, or the description of this resolution. Are there any questions for staff regarding it?
If this is approved, how long is it?
Good question. Ask an engineer to put a time on something.
I would expect, once construction starts, it's probably a 12-month construction time. And we're probably four to six months away from construction.
All right, any other questions? All right, if there are no other questions, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Colby and a second from Councilman Mascara. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 16 is discussion and action on declaration of surplus. Mr. Powell.
We have seven items that are upright for anyone who is interested in purchasing some slightly used equipment. You have that list there, but it's a boring machine, a Craftsman mower, another Craftsman zero-turn mower, and international DuraPatch truck, GMC C6000 bucket truck, a Vermeer back ton excavator, and a pizza generator, to be thought of scrap. Metals with a lot of y'all ass.
All right, so, and just to, I just want to ask this. If we declare this as surplus, or if council declares this as surplus, how would the public make a bid, for example, on one of those lawnmowers?
They're all be placed on GovDeals, which is a website that most governments use to surplus their equipment.
Okay, do we have any other questions for staff? If there are no others, if there are no questions for staff, do we have a motion? We have a motion from Councilman Jones and a second from Councilman Godfrey to declare the surplus. All those, was that? Oh, I'm sorry. That was a second from Councilman Colby. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it.
Ready for some good barbecue? Come on by Southern Heritage Barbecue, 2276 Veterans Boulevard. Home cooks, southern barbecue served fast. Barbecue by the pound, mouth-watering ribs or delicious Brunswick stew. All at Southern Heritage Barbecue, 2276 Veterans Boulevard. For those special orders, call ahead, 275-4304. Southern Heritage Barbecue, Dublin. Folks are coming from all over to enjoy the country cooking at Minner General Store. Start your day off right with fresh cooked breakfast, including grits, bacon, eggs, sausage, and homemade biscuits. Lunchtime, stop in for delicious fried chicken, pork chops, and all your favorite meats and vegetables. Look for our specials, including hamburger steak. We also have all your feed, seed, and beverage needs. See why folks are driving from all over to enjoy the food at Minner General Store.
All right, we're down to the last item on the agenda tonight. I know it's been a long one, but we did take off a meeting in July due to some absences. So we have plowed through this, and now we're at the last one, which is the appointment to the tree board. As you may recall from a couple of months ago, the council reconstituted the tree board. It's now a seven-member tree board that's going to have some specific duties, which include creating a planting plan for the city's right-ofways along sidewalks in our neighborhoods so that we can get some trees planted in there, and also for coordinating the planting of trees in our parks, which are, which will be receiving some much-needed attention over the next two years. So at this time, I make the following recommendations to council for the tree board. For two-year terms, Lindsey Newman, Marilyn Stoff, Troy Wyndham. For one-year terms, Chip Wilson, Patsy Baker, Cole Porter, and Raymond Joyce.
Can we rebuild those there?
Yes. For two-year terms, terms, Lindsey Newman, Marilyn Stoff, Troy Wyndham. For one-year terms, Chip Wilson, Patsy Baker, Cole Porter, and Raymond Joyce. And the liaison to the tree board would be Tess Godfrey, and the tree board would be- to the tree board would be Tess Godfrey, and the tree board would be supported by, uh, city staff. This is, uh, the way the resolution, the way the ordinance is written is that the mayor, uh, is supposed to provide a list of proposed, of proposed names, and council, uh, votes to either confirm or not confirm. Uh, if you do not confirm, then I would submit additional names, but if you are ready to confirm, we need a motion to do that.
Make a motion.
So, I have a motion from Mr. Mascara to confirm. Do we have a second? Second from Councilman Brown. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Now, note that at least three of those members have not served, uh, city boards before, so this will be their first time. We're trying really hard to get people who are interested in serving the city to, um, to get on these boards and get some experience with that, so I appreciate y'all stepping up. I think I see a few of y'all out here tonight, so after the meeting, if you come, uh, to be a part of the tree board, if you could come forward and we'll get a quick picture, and appreciate your willingness to volunteer. Uh, it's now time for citizens' comments. Um, it's now time for citizens' comments. So, we'll open up the microphone for citizens' comments. Anybody would like to make a comment, you can come forward at this time. Alright, if there are no citizens' comments, we'll now have, uh, comments from staff and council. We'll start with Mr. Daniel.
Could I, could I make a quick comment, please?
Yes, yes, please come forward.
Hey.
Hi.
My name's Kevin Myers. Uh, just wanted to talk about briefly the, uh, project at Stubbs Park. It's really exciting to hear all of what's going on. It's the first time I've seen a lot of the budget and what's happening. Uh, more specifically, I'd like to speak about the skate park there, um, the father of skaters. You may not know it, but there is actually a pretty big skate community here, um, a lot of kids, a lot of parents are involved. We noticed the fence is down around it, so we're wondering what was going on. Um, we heard that the skate park is not going to be torn down, so that's really exciting. The skate park is a wonderful place, kids go, it's safe, um, great place for fellowship, good for the community as a whole, um, great for the kids, really excited to see Dublin moving forward, and I'm just here to let you know that, um, we could organize skate community, if there's anything that we can help you with, we have ideas, if you want us to present something. It's exciting to see that something is happening there. I know the skaters are excited, and the parents that are really looking forward to something. Um, so if there's anything that we can do, just please let me know, I appreciate it.
Alright, please, please stay for the end of the meeting, end of the meeting. Uh, if you can meet with us down here, we'll get your contact information, I think I know how to get ahold of me, but, um, we want to make sure we got your email.
Sure.
Um, just as information, the fence was taken down because it was broken in places, and also the metal building that was next to the skate park, the council at the last meeting approved the funds to remove that metal building. That's going to open up some additional, uh, concrete pad, which, um, in that Stubbs Park budget, uh, there will be some funds to add some, uh, small amount of additional skate park equipment. Um, so I look forward to, uh, seeing what your ideas and the ideas of your family would be for some improvements that we can continue to do there.
Thank you very much.
So, if you could just come up after the meeting, we'll get your contact information.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Alright, yes, if you'd like to, oh, that's right, I remember.
Uh, we are getting ready to have our annual, uh, law enforcement, military, firemen, and emergency technicians appreciation day cookout, and we want to invite all of you to come be with us Saturday, September 17th, downtown Markville, Madison, starting at 1:00 until 7:00. And all the communities welcome as well. Can I hand these up?
Yes, please do.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you, man.
After you finish handing those out, I, just for the public's benefit, do you, I know we all know you, uh, Mr. Wilkes, but do you mind just saying for the microphone your name and which organization you represent?
Sunny D. Wilkes Ministries. One of my board members is right there, Pastor Phil Bruce, Cornerstone and Sandy. So, we, we just like to appreciate these people, uh, that serve us and protect us. There's one right there, God bless you. Thank you, we, we show you respect, and, and we just appreciate all those that serve us. Thank you again.
Thank you, appreciate all that you do. Any other citizens' comments? Alright, uh, we'll now move to comments, Mr. Daniels. Mr. King.
Uh, just thank everyone for coming out, and y'all stay safe.
Alright, thank you. Uh, Ms. Brown? Alright. Uh, Mr. Brad?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, uh, might thank everybody for being here, uh, nice crowd, uh, look forward to moving forward in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thank anyone for coming out to Brezley, where they received the award tonight, and offer your hard work, your true dedication, and I'd like to, um, just encourage the citizen just to continue to have faith in, in you trust us. Thank you.
Ms. Godfrey.
I'd just like to say thank you all for coming out. Happy birthday to Sarah today, and, um, Josh, congratulations. I do care about you, and I've gotten to know you, and you're doing a great job. I, I still say same thing, so, anyway. Thank you all for coming out, and y'all have a great night and a great weekend.
Thank you, Councilman Godfrey. Ms. Colby.
Um, I had an opportunity this last week to take my first-ever train ride, and, um, sitting here tonight, I think about the traction that it takes to get a new group of people moving together in a positive and a new direction. Um, sometimes it takes some time, and I'm learning, with government especially, that, uh, government works more slowly than I anticipated, um, and I think a lot of that is because of the weight of what is carried. So, think about it, that we're laying down rails, we're, um, setting and establishing, um, new direction and vision, and I thank you for coming out and giving, um, us your input about the direction that the city needs to go and the next stop. Um, we thank you for the traction that was made tonight, and I'm excited for the, uh, future of our city.
Thank you for those comments. Mr. Griggs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations, Josh. Um, and thank y'all for coming out tonight, um, it's good to see as many as we have. Congratulations to all the employees that were recognized tonight, and, um, thank them for their service, and thank the police for their service and dedication, and, um, y'all have a great day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Uh, I just want to say from Brez, the employee of the board, Sammy Daniel, um, 20 employees, also thank you for your service. Josh from Brez, I'm in the new city manager job with the mayor and council, just making sure we stay consistent and fair on the season and process, as I'll ask the mayor and council. We've got some great projects coming within the city, so, uh, citizens, we look forward to those great projects, and everyone stay safe, and there's the monkeypox out there, so.
Mr. Mascara.
City employees, uh, congratulations, um, on your achievement, thank you for your dedication and your hard work. Joshua, Josh, Mr. Powell, uh, congratulations, I think you're going to do, uh, continue to do an awesome job. It is slow, I agree with Sarah, and slow for me is not always the best. Appreciate what you're doing, appreciate your tenacity, and, uh, supporting everything that we can do. We've done, in eight months, a lot, and it's been busy, and we haven't been different. We've worked together, and we've helped. Joshua succeeded his job, he's helped us be the council that you represented, that you elected. You know, every time we make a decision, this is your money, this is your town, we're just here to steward it and do what you ask us to do with it, and why would we make bad decisions for the people that we represent? The gentleman that came up here, I'm with you on the skate thing, you actually, actually have, you actually have some adults in here who skate too, so you might, you might, you might, you might go get Andy over there to help you out. So, I appreciate that you're focused on alternative, alternative sports, kids need to be healthy. Uh, I just want to thank everybody for coming in, and, um, God that it went as smooth as it did this evening, and, um, we are all different, and we're all going to make different decisions, and that's how you get the best representation. If we're all doing the same thing all the time, then nothing would change, and it's going to change because we're not going to all agree, so I appreciate y'all.
Thank you for those comments. Mr. Powell.
Well, if you'd asked me a year ago if I would be sitting here doing this, I'd have said no way, um, but, um, never say never, right? Um, I, like the mayor said, took this job initially, uh, just trying to help out, um, never envisioning that I had the capacity or, um, you know, even the desire to continue on, um, but I've, I've given my heart to the place, and, uh, I pray about this a lot, and, um, I just want to thank everybody, um, and I understand completely the vote tonight, so, you know, I totally respect, uh, the decisions that were made, and I know it's a difficult decision to make, um, but I'm here to serve the community and, um, serve this council, except for one of you, so I hope to deliver and not disappoint. Thank you.
Alright, thank you for that. You know, in the Bible it says, "By their fruits you will know them." So, I'm just asking y'all to look for the fruits. I think that this is an exciting time for the city of Dublin. This meeting is adjourned, thank you.